WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fentress County Commission. The Fentress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fentress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equahousan Leader, Member FDIC.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for presentation of the colors presented by the Clark Range Junior ROTC. Please remain standing from the place of the flag by Ms. Kim Davison, Second District Commissioner, and opening prayer by Josh Grush.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, we love you and we thank you for the privilege of prayer. And Lord, we thank you that we can come to you tonight knowing that you are an all-powerful God in every place, and Lord, you know all things. And so we come to you tonight and ask you, Lord, for your wisdom. And Lord, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who you sent to this earth to die for our sins, Lord, and that we can have forgiveness of our sins. And Lord, we thank you for these servants that you sent to our community. We pray, Lord, tonight that you would bless them, that you would give them wisdom that only you can give. And Lord, I pray that they would seek you. I pray, God, that you would forgive us where we have failed you, Lord, and that you would forgive our sins. We pray for the healthcare needs of our community, God. We pray that you would intervene. And we pray, Lord, for many other needs that our community has. God, we ask that, again, you would meet with us tonight, Lord, that you would be honored and glorified in all that's done in Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
I'd say it certainly is good to see this crowd here tonight. We appreciate your attendance. Anytime, you're more than welcome to come back each and every time, but we have a meeting. We've got to be as transparent and all open up and certainly appreciate you all being here. Ms. Amanda Hicks, will you call the roll, please?
Miki, here.
Justin, here.
Kim, here.
Rod, here.
Robert, here.
Benny, here.
Lester, here.
Leon, here.
Wade, here.
Larry, here.
All present.
Hope you all have had a chance to look over the meetings from last month. Do I hear an approval motion of that?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for last month.
Motion made by Commissioner Gooding.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Leon Stepp. Any discussion?
Is there not a correction on Cotton Dayhoff's son, Randy Dayhoff? Is that not Lynn?
That's Lynn, yes it is, yes.
And he does have two other children that we failed to recognize.
That's been brought to our attention, yes. We had no knowledge of that, and we've been in contact with them. They called and we've got that taken care of also. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miki, four.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Robert, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Item number seven, consideration of approval of notaries. We have a renewal on Michelle G. Mann. Renewal on Jennifer Wells. Renewal on Kathy Pritchett. Renewal on Gloria Roberts. New on Casey South. New application on Laura Johnson. And new application on Lana Rinker. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Justin Miller.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Robert, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four.
Miki, four.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against. Item number eight is the reappointment of two members of the Fentress County Planning Commission. The first one is Deborah York, whose term expires this month. And Bill Bowden, whose term also expires this month. It'll be for a four-year term to expire in 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Rod Williams. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Robert, four.
Rod, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Miki, four.
Larry, four. Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against. Item number nine is the consideration of approval of Resolution 20-20-04 to apply for and accept a community facility grant through USDA for the purchase of equipment for the Fentress County Highway Department. Mr. Joey Reagan, would you like to come up and say something about that, please, sir?
Yeah, we're looking to replace some of our machinery and this helps purchase some of it.
This is a community facility grant that's administered by the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development. Is that correct, Joey?
Yes, sir.
It's in the amount of $275,000.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion being made by Commissioner Lester Gooden to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any just further discussion on this?
This is 100% grant?
No, 55, 45. Any further discussion?
When the 45 comes out of your budget, I guess.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry, four.
Wade, four.
Leon, four.
Lester, four.
Benny, four.
Robert, four.
Rod, four.
Kim, four.
Justin, four.
Miki, four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Let's see, the next item, number 10, is consideration of request from the Fentress County Highway Department for a road change at Rotten Fork Road over Rotten Fork at log mile 0.135 as a result of the new bridge. A portion of the old road leading to and from the old bridge has been abandoned. And what they did, they come in, replaced the bridges there next to the church, moved it, moved the road up from the, for the east from the church and kind of in the back. And they've sowed down all the lawn, so they've actually did away with the majority of the road. So at this time, Joey's asking on behalf of the church to take it, to take it off the books, just that small portion of it. And it is 14 to 16 foot wide and 408 feet on the south side, 211 feet on the north side is what it is. And it's where they put in a new bridge, so they've sowed, the state sowed it back down so that's where there's no road there nowhere anymore. So it just goes around, and the churches wanting to build on to the upper side. Correct, Joey?
Yep.
What's the will of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second. From Kim Davison to approve, second by Commissioner Lester Gooden. Is there any discussion on it?
We've got these general notes here. What are they for, just?
What does it say there, Rod?
It just talks about the grading, the seeding, and the sodding, I mean.
That's what the state did, yeah, when they finished it, yeah. They built the bridge, about $900,000 worth of bridge worth there, and then they sewed down on the east side of the, east side of the church. So it's all sewn down at this time. Yeah, they planted up the whole road bed. Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Lester, four.
Benny, four.
Robert, four.
Rod, four.
Kim, four.
Justin, four.
Miki, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four. Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes. Item number 11, consideration of approval of Resolution 20-20-05, approving policies and procedures for a property tax incentive program relating to the negotiation acceptance of payments in lieu of and valorum tax with respect to certain facilities located in Fentress County. Mr. Joey Wheeler or Troy Gammon, would you like to come up and speak to that one?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Troy Gammon, this is Joe Wheeler. We are volunteer members of the Industrial Board. There have been several changes made to that board where things need to be put in place that have been recommended to us at the state level. One of those is to have a pilot program put in place, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. But that is a program that when we have a prospective retail or industrial client come to us, we have in place then a checklist with their number of jobs, with their payroll, their needs, as to how we could help them initially get started. That has to come at the state level, that has to go through the ID Board. So we and several of you all have met with an attorney that is a specialist to a pilot program. We had five or six that we worked through and they're hours down through the work session. We've come up with a plan that we have approved. You all have it in your packets for this month. And what we're asking is that you all approve that pilot program. That will give us the opportunity that when a business comes to us and they want an answer within even sometimes three days, it could be a week or so, that we don't have to all come back together as an ID Board group, as a county commission group, because it may be too late. Those initiatives that we were offering will be consistent, they will be competitive, and puts us on par to be able to move a little bit quicker. And each of these offers that we make can be changed to a specific person that we're making the offer to as we feel, as we find out what they're going to start with.
So it is a recruitment tool, in short, it's a recruitment tool that can be used. And we'd like to also say, in the last three months, we have had a couple folks look at it. One was a feeding mill that looked at it and were actually not out. We was like to come back in second, second or third place out of the state of Tennessee. They were looking for a place to build a new feeding mill out there. And not saying that we're not out of it, because they're not really decided for sure where they're going to put it, I heard a couple weeks ago. But it, it's logistics is what has kept us out of it so far, because they have a company already in Sequoia, Bledsoe County, I believe, is where some of the poultry facility is. But anyway, we were close on that one, and this is just an incentive to try to get someone's attention to come here. So what is the will of the commission on this motion?
I said in the meetings that they was talking about, and it sounded real good to me, and I will make the motion to approve.
Motion made to approve by Commissioner Lester Gooden, second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion? I'd like to thank the ID Board members and the county commission members that, I guess we met three, four, or five times. I'm not really for sure how many times we met. And also the lawyer, I'd like to pronounce his name, but I don't know that I can pronounce his last name, so I'm going to call him Mark's, his first name, but he done a fantastic job for us. He gave us several to look at. We combined most of them together and took parts out of them that made ours look better. And I think it's going to be something fantastic to happen. Any more discussion?
I'd like to just thank the ID Board and all the commissioners that worked on this. This really gives Fentress County a way to move forward, and it gives them the parameters to work in, and they're able to move when it's time to move, because a lot of people don't understand, and we all want to get things in here, but a lot of times it's a hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait, let's move right now. And they, this gives them the ability to move when we need to move.
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Larry, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Robert, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Justin, four. Four. Ten-four, none against.
Motion passes, item number 12, consideration of a request from the ID Board for the county to reimburse the IDB for fees and services rendered and expense incurred with preparation and adoption of the pilot policy and procedure. What it is, it's a bill from Bass, Perry &amp; Sims, and they actually, the gentleman made actually two or three trips up here, did all this work-study fees, and the money's already in the line item for them. They just want permission to go ahead and get the bill paid out of it, and it comes to $1,100. Is that correct? Pretty much so.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Robert Cooper to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Mickey McDonald. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miki, four.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Robert, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four. Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Item number 12 passes. Item number 13, discussing, discussion of supporting a water feasibility study for Fentress County to be conducted by the USDA. And this is, let it be known, as a feasibility study only. Mr. Joey Wheeler, would you care to speak to that?
As in the last, probably, well, the whole time I've been on the board, there's been several things that have come through prospective clients for the industrial park, and we've not had enough water capacity for them to provide the water they need, especially like a food processing or something, they require a lot of water. Now, the infrastructure is already in the park, piping and that kind of thing, but it's the ability to produce enough water. So one of our newest members is Dwight Dixon, and he works with USDA. And he heard us talking about this, and there's a branch of his department that is actually doing, currently doing a study in Onida and doing some work over there with this very thing, to increase their water capacity. So Dwight had a team of them come up here, and we met with the mayor, Jimmy was there, the, the, Lynn from Utility District, several people were there. And they are willing to do a study, a countywide study for us, to look at what is the best way to increase our water capacity, not just for the industry, but for everyone. I think they said currently, right now, the current usage is like 2.8 million gallons a day, and the system is, the capacity is 3 million. So we're close already. So something, you know, we're going to be looking at this pretty soon, something that will have to be done, especially if we're going to bring bigger industry in here. So they're offering to do this at no cost to the county, the city, or anyone. They're just going to need some information fed into it to come up with the study, the details of the study. And we're just asking, it has to be a, they have to have a sponsor, and it has to be a governing body. So we're requesting that the county, I think it would probably be Jimmy that would have to sign the application. We're going to put the application together, the ID Board is, and then we have to have someone from a government body to sponsor that. And again, sponsoring is just saying, we're for it. There's no money whatsoever, no cost. As it moves on, if we decide to do some of that, then there might be some cost, and some of that can even be shared by USDA, depending on what we decide to do. So that's what we're requesting, just if the county jump on board and sponsor this project, but we can't. It has to be, well, we can, but we have to have a governing body to sign off on it.
I believe, Joey, it might be, the governing body may have to be the city, since they already have the water there.
It can be either one.
Okay.
Either one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we support the study.
I'll second.
Commissioner Benny Hughes made the motion to approve the study, second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miki, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Robert, four.
Justin, four.
Benny, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four.
Lester, four. Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Motion passes, thank Joey.
On behalf of the ID Board, I would just like to say to the commissioners, thank you very much for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Item number 14, consideration of Resolution 20-20-06 to authorize and appropriate funds for an actuarial study with the TCRS system to establish retirement credit for former commissioners who meet the criteria. Becky, you want to address this, please?
This is the second resolution to the resolution that you passed last, last month. This is going to allow the study to be done and to allow past commissioners to buy back their time for TCRS retirements. This resolution is just for the study. That's it. We're not, it's, there's no obligation to it at all, except to pay $550 for TCRS to do the study. What I understand about the study is that we have to be able to identify what a commissioner's wages were. And I've talked to Tyler, we've looked at the system, we can get it all the way back to 2000, what a commissioner made it in 2000. But that's in the middle of the term. So in your motion, if you would like to carry this, if you'd like to make a motion to proceed with this resolution, I would request that you think about the timeframe of this study, and let's put it in the middle. And I would, I think 2002, any commissioner who was elected in 2002 to present could be part of the study. Do you guys have any questions for me in regards?
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wade Matthews. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Benny, four.
Robert, four.
Rod, against.
Kim, four.
Justin, four.
Miki, against.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four. Eight-four-two, against.
Motion passes, eight-four-two, against. Item number 15, consideration of an amendment to the Fentress County Employee Handbook updating the section regarding seasonal employees.
So with this, some of our women has shifted a little bit in the last two years since the handbook was written. Before, when we wrote this, Solid Waste would have temporary employees. They could be full-time, they could be part-time. I think at that point, there were some employees who might get benefits, time off. They might be a temporary employee while they had several employees out on leave, and they gave them that benefit. Spoken with Solid Waste, Jason is good with, if you're a temporary or a seasonal employee, you're only going to get paid for what you work. You're not going to get holiday pay, you're not going to get vacation accrual, you're not going to do anything except work when we need you to work. So I would request that you allow the change in the handbook to reflect that they won't be eligible for any benefits.
Do I hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kim Davison. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miki, four.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Rod, four.
Robert, four.
Benny, four.
Lester, four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
Larry, four.
Motion passes, ten-four, none against.
Thank you.
Item number 16, consideration of Resolution 20-20-07, authorizing the submission of an application to the City of Jamestown Downtown Facade Grant Committee to participate in the Tennessee ECD Facade Improvement Grant Program. Ms. Martha Wiley, is she here? What she's asking for, she come to the Budget Committee meeting last week, and it's got opened back up, this facade grant, I think it's in value of $100,000, and I believe there'll be 10, possibly 10 people will be able to, 10 businesses, if they get that many to decide that they want to do it. And it'll be a value of $10,000, and each one that puts in application for it will put up 25% of that, which would be $2,500 on their own. So Ms. Martha Wiley has come forward for the Historical Society to get the double doors fixed and a facade on the building at the Historical Society Building over here, at the old Pinkley Building. That being said, what's the will of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the resolution.
How much, eight-four-two, but how much money are we going to?
$2,500.
$2,500. The Budget Committee passed that last week, Leon. The Budget Committee passed that last week, the break before the commission. Motion was made by Commissioner Benny Hughes and second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Larry, four.
Miki, four.
Justin, four.
Kim, four.
Robert, four.
Lester, four.
Four.
Leon, four.
Wade, four.
And Rod.
Four.
Ten-four, none against.
Ten-four, none against. Item number 17, consideration of Resolution 20-20-08, declaring Fentress County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. This is the resolution, and I will read it. Resolution 20-20-08, a resolution to declare Fentress County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution reads, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed." And whereas Article 1, Section 26 of the Constitution of Tennessee provides that the citizens of this state have a right to keep and to bear arms for their common defense. And whereas certain legislation introduced in the current session of the United States Congress could have the effect of infringing on the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and the intent of Article 1, Section 26 of the Constitution of Tennessee. And whereas the Fentress County Board of Commissioners is concerned about the passage of any bill containing language which could be interpreted as infringing on the rights of the citizens of Fentress County to keep and bear arms, or could begin a slippery slope of restrictions on the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Fentress County.
We're a grassroots organization, you may or may not have heard of. I want to thank both Robert Cooper and Benny Hughes for contacting me this afternoon in response to my request for contact. I object to this resolution, twenty twenty dash eight, based on the following. The resolution is based on the irrational fear that the federal government is going to swoop in and take all the guns from Fentress County. It is based on an amendment that is no longer historically valid, in that we are not maintaining accounting militia. This amendment predates a standing army. If we are maintaining accounting militia, when do they drill and when do they parade? I'd like to be there. The state constitution also addresses common defense. That means for all the people. This, uh, resolution implies that there should be no reasonable restrictions like background checks, a red flag law, or the removal of firearms for criminal behavior. How does it protect families, children, and the community, if that's the way it reads? Finally, this resolution and others like it, where there is public interest and needs to be published for public consumption in the newspaper, well ahead of the meeting, so that there's time for comment. Um, as I explained to Amanda today, there are a lot of people in the county who don't listen to the local radio stations and don't get that information. I don't understand why it's not more thoroughly discussed in the paper ahead of time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Could we get our county attorney to enlighten us a little bit on this?
Ms. Leslie Ledbetter?
Well, thank you, um, Executive Johnson and Commissioner Miller. I, I guess, some of you have come to me over the past few weeks and have had questions about this, and we did some research, um, consulted several other attorneys and defense attorneys, uh, law enforcement, and just to basically give you all a, a very brief overview of where this resolution, as it reads, comes from, and where these laws that are being proposed, that I know a majority of you all are here very concerned about the potential for the infringement on your rights to bear and carry arms lawfully. I think that's the word that we need to, to remember. Um, in Fentress County, we have always traditionally been a very supportive Second Amendment area, um, community, county, however you want to consider us, and in this resolution, simply, what it says is that we are affirming our right to act within the constitutional and other legal rights to protect the Second Amendments for its citizens. Now, let me give you a basic, real basic civics lesson. If you didn't have Bill Cody for civics and American government, you missed out, but, um, the federal law trumps everything. If the federal law says that here's your, your gun rights, or here's how we're going to, um, work your gun rights, that's number one. Your state law is number two. If your state law says that without infringing on your federal gun law rights, we're gonna put an additional restriction on there, or we're gonna do something different in the state, so long as it doesn't step on the federal toes, it basically also is, is, um, law. Third, is your local county government and your municipal governance, your, your counties and your cities. And what you're passing tonight, or if you pass this, what you're reviewing, rather, at this point, is a resolution that isn't a law particularly. It's simply, in, in any action the county would take in this is symbolic. We are symbolically saying that, um, we support the Second Amendment, because we can't do anything in this county that says, we are not gonna follow whatever laws are in place already. Now, I think all of you would, would understand that we're not taking it back to the wild, wild west using this resolution that's before you, um, to say that the Brady waiting period laws for handguns won't apply in Fentress County. We, with this resolution, we are not trying to say that criminal gun possession laws don't apply in Fentress County. The resolution, I think, is written broadly enough to say, we support the Second Amendment and any other law that has been deemed constitutional and doesn't infringe on the rights of, of law-abiding citizens, and that's the key here, to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment. What I want everyone to understand, and I say this on the record primarily because you have some criminal defense attorneys and people who try to go far to the other side of the law in this, um, if you go to a local gun shop tomorrow, if this resolution passes, please expect to still have to go through the background process, whatever it may be, for, for the Brady laws, because they've been found, held up by the Supreme Court, to be constitutional. If you're stopped on the bypass, if one of these boys stop you for drug trafficking, and you've got a handgun in your, um, glove box, please know that if Fentress County passes this resolution, it doesn't say that, uh, just 'cause you're carrying, uh, running drugs from Georgia to Jamestown, you can carry a handgun in your glove box. I want everybody to be clear about that. This is law-abiding, lawful gun ownership and possession. In addition to that, um, I, I want everybody to understand that in Fentress County, we have not discussed, and you all have not, I, I think I gave you a very brief memo in this last meeting, what some of these laws are that are potentially, um, up for a vote in Congress, up for a vote in the Tennessee Legislature as well, and while this doesn't say during the current session of the Tennessee Legislature, someone may want to add that into this resolution, that would be the only suggestion I had on it, is because there is what's called a red flag law, and I know most of y'all have heard those words, and they strike fear in the heart of, of lawful, uh, gun owners and persons who carry guns for protection, and I, I want you all to understand on a legal, safe, and practical, and economical level what a red flag law really is. Um, and I guess what you have to understand first is, where does it spring from? Right now, we have laws in place where if you live with a husband or another family member in the home with you, and resides in the home with you, and that person, um, pulls a gun on you, or blacks your eye, or, um, makes a credible threat to you, you can seek an order of protection on an emergency basis against that person, and they will be called into court, certain day and time, and if the judge finds that the person who brings this action, the person who says, hey, I'm in threat, or I've been hit, or I've had a gun pulled on me, can prove their case, the burden of proof is on that person, then you lose your right to own a weapon. And when I say a weapon, what the judge will read you off as, as the, um, what they call the perpetrator in law enforcement, um, the judge will read you off this little sentence that says, you have forty-eight hours in which to surrender all your weapons, and Rockford's up here, he's sat through enough of these to know, to another person, and to let the court know where it is. If you take it to your sister's, if you take it to your mama's house, it's somewhere you don't live, you give them your weapons, guns, knives, bombs, firecrackers, we've had it all, haven't we, Rockford? So, uh, and you have to tell the court what you do with them. But Rockford and, and the sheriff who couldn't be here tonight, his wife's son having dialysis, and I know he sent one of his officers, or several of them actually, to stand in for this, they don't go out to your house to determine, the law doesn't tell them to go out to determine what you do with those guns. So, the red flag laws offer an expansion, which says, if Tyler is my neighbor, and I feel threatened by him, I can then seek an order of protection against him, in the same way you could if he lived in your home. It also says that if I think Tyler is suicidally depressed, I can seek that order of protection for him, for his own safety. Now, the way the law is written now, like I said, it has to be someone that lives with you, it has to be someone in your household that is an immediate threat to you, and I'll tell you how you remember that, in law school, they told us, um, the law doesn't care near so much if you kill your neighbor, or if you kill yourself, but if you're gonna kill somebody that lives in the home with you, your home is your castle, so the law as it's written now is very protective of the home. So, the red flag law would expand that out to other persons, any family member, or it would allow law enforcement if they felt that there was a need to seek that. However, if you deal with this on a daily basis, like we do, unfortunately, um, there are laws already in place. Judicial hospitalization, we used to call it in the ER business, the six-oh-four law, you're gonna six-oh-four somebody, uh, to get judicially hospitalized and evaluated. A judge signs those just like in any other due process claim. Uh, in addition, there's conservatorship laws out there on the books that allow you to do most of these things, but what it doesn't do is put the burden on law enforcement to go out to your house and, and make sure that you don't have any guns. It puts the burden on you to rid yourself of the guns to law enforcement immediately, and it also puts the burden on you as the, like I said, person who's in question here, the perpetrator, to pay for your medical treatment or your doctor visit to determine if you can get your guns back. It shifts the burden of proof, and it expands who can seek those emergency protection orders, and for what purpose. What it also does on a practical level and economical level for the county, and, and I don't speak for, against the red flag laws, I'm just telling you what they are, and it is proposed House Bill eighteen seventy-three, um, it's before the General Assembly right now in Tennessee, and, excuse me, it's before the House, I don't think it's yet before the Senate, that didn't have a companion bill with it, that's another civics lesson, but, um, what I want y'all to understand is that on a county level, for the ten of you, these red flag laws, as they're proposed in Tennessee, and, and somewhat in the, the federal system as well, puts the burden on these guys to go out and get shot trying to take your guns. It puts the burden then on the county for the liability, and you know, we talk about, that's my big word, right, liability. Um, it shifts the liability onto local governments, um, the state really only has the liability in these cases when it is a felony, that the state gets involved and says, hey, we'll bear some of that burden for you, county, and a lot of that is born in the financial situation. Y'all remember when the guy ran through the courthouse out here, right? Well, he was charged initially with a felony, and because he was charged with a felony, the county did not have to pay for his judicial hospitalization. Had that only been a misdemeanor crime, had he only threatened to run through the courthouse and he was arrested, the county would have had to borne the brunt of, um, his medical expenses, right? Well, what this law says is that, oh, the person who's, um, in order of protection is being sought against, they should pay their own medical expenses to prove that they're sane, or that they don't have dementia, or they don't have these tendencies to harm someone. But we all know that most people in Fentress County qualify as indigent, right? I, I mean, if you stand in court on Tuesdays now, ninety-nine percent of people qualify for a court-appointed attorney, and in this case, then it, if you're indigent and you cannot afford your medical exam to prove you should be allowed to have your weapons back, then the county would bear that cost. The state's not gonna bear that cost, 'cause you're not committing a felony, essentially. You're not been charged with that, so the state doesn't jump in there and help you out. So, I don't know that people have looked at what red flag laws do outside of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment concerns are one thing, but I think there's practical and economic concerns that you, you could base your decisions about just the general red flag laws. Now, this resolution doesn't address red flag laws directly as a word, it doesn't say, um, that, but I want you all to have that education to understand what that means. And then I'll jump back to say, all right, what does a sanctuary do or do, doesn't do? Please understand that this is a symbolic measure that says, we in Fentress County support constitutional and other legal rights protecting the Second Amendment. Again, it doesn't have any legal, it's not gonna open us up to be the wild, wild west tomorrow. It doesn't have any legal effect to change, amend, add to, or take away from any current federal or state law. This is a, a measure that you all would look at to say, law-abiding citizens, if you're here tonight in support of your gun ownership and your gun rights, so long as you're lawful, we're with you all the way. But I definitely want to make the point on the record, that if you ain't lawful, we can't help you, a, a, and don't try to, um, look at the word sanctuary as we are opening ourselves up to unlawful or, um, no restriction on gun ownership, possession, purchase, um, especially in gun crimes, because I, I can guarantee, and, and officers here can attest to, uh, if you pull a gun on your wife, and you pull a gun on the officer when he comes to arrest you for pulling a gun on your wife, we'll take your gun, and we will sell it at the gun auction, if you're found guilty. But the rest of you, I don't think you, you really have a, a tremendous concern, because no one in law enforcement wants to be responsible for coming out to your house and beating on the door to take your guns away from you based on, uh, your neighbor's assertion that you're a menace. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
So, basically, we're just voting to show our support for what is written as the Second Amendment. That's all we're doing.
And Ms., Ms. Leslie, do I understand this right, that whether we pass this resolution or don't pass this resolution, it basically don't make a hell of a thing?
It is a symbolic resolution, um, and what that means is, you all don't have the authority under the law to open up Fentress County to change any of the way the gun laws are today, whatever they are. I, I can't make Brady any different, you can't make Brady any different. I, I can't make the, um, criminal laws for gun possession any different, that, they will always remain the same. What you're saying here is that we are a county that, if you pass this, that supports what the Second Amendment stands for, and doesn't support any current legislation that is out there that may infringe on the Second Amendment rights, whatever it may be. If you want to pass, I guess, when I brought up the red flag laws, what I'm saying is, if you all want to specifically let the Tennessee Legislature and the US Congress know that for whatever these practical, safety, economic reasons are, that you don't support that, you could do that in a separate resolution, but this particular one doesn't point out just red flag laws, it says anything that infringes upon what's out there in the Second Amendment. And I know it's not real, I don't know what the word is, um, it doesn't stir up a lot of passion or whatever to talk about law, law enforcement lives, or money, or, uh, judicial hospitalizations, or using the laws that are in place right now, but I just want you to understand that there are two or three other considerations, and if, like I said, if you all want to draft a resolution that specifically sends out to your Congress and your state legislature and says, hey, we think we're good here, um, these red flag laws are, are just too much, and they burden small governments too much, uh, for those purposes, that's another story. That's not what this is, particularly.
So, basically, if you're a, a, a gun owner, a Biden citizen, going by the law, that's where we will, we have to protect your rights. If you're some crazy I hear going around shooting up the town, shooting people, we're not gonna stand behind you. That's just the, that's just the basic facts to it. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the best things this would do would be, this speak with a loud voice to anybody in the future that's governor, state congressman, that wants to really tighten down on gun control laws, if they can look and see that over half the state or the whole state, every county's passed something like this, you know, it just show them, hey, we don't need to do this.
Any more discussion?
But this particular one doesn't point out just red flag laws. It says anything that infringes upon what's out there in the Second Amendment. And I know it's not real, I don't know what the word is, um, it doesn't stir up a lot of passion or whatever to talk about law, law enforcement lives or money or, uh, judicial hospitalizations or using the laws that are in place right now. But I just want you to understand that there are two or three other considerations. And if, like I said, if you all want to draft a resolution that specifically sends out to your Congress and your state legislature and says, hey, we think we're good here, um, these red flag laws are, are just too much and they burden small governments too much, uh, for those purposes, that's another story. That's not what this is particularly.
So, basically, if you're a, a, a gun owner, a Biden citizen, going by the law, that's where we will, we have to protect your rights. If you're some crazy I hear going around shooting up the town, shooting people, we're not going to stand behind you. That's just the, that's just the basic facts to it. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the best things this would do would be this speak with a loud voice to anybody in the future that's governor, state congressman, that wants to really tighten down on gun control laws. If they can look and see that over half the state or the whole state, every county's passed something like this, you know, it, it just show them, hey, we don't need to do this.
Any more discussion? We'll leave it back there in the back.
I had no idea I was going to do this. I came to support this resolution unlike the both. This is happening in Maryland-
State your name if you don't care.
Bernie Murphy.
State your name.
Bernie Murphy.
Bernie Murphy.
This is happening in, uh, Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, and a bunch of other states where, where county governments are protecting us, law-abiding citizens' rights for our Second Amendment. Believe it or not, there's three counties in California, if you can believe that, that are standing up for gun owners as well. Uh, the red flag law is a very iffy law because my, my problem with it is who determines what a person's mental illness is? So, that's the part of the red law that is gray as far as I'm concerned. But I came here tonight to support you all for supporting and, and protecting our Second Amendment right, your Second Amendment right. It's by the Constitution of this country. It's not someone's choice if she wants a gun or if she wants to, she doesn't have to own a gun. We have the right to form a milit-, a militia. We don't have a militia. We don't have parades. If you want to form one and have parades, I volunteer to be on the committee, not a problem. But I'm here to support you, as I think most of the people in this room are, to stand up for our rights as law-abiding American citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any more discussion?
Right there. There's a light here.
My name is Jane Johnson. I'm from, uh, the Banner area of the county. I don't have a problem with gun owners. I've got family that owns guns. I don't have a problem with law-abiding people having guns and, and, uh, being, the laws being enforced. I do have a problem with, this goes too far. Uh, now, you can say, oh, it's just a symbolic, it doesn't mean anything, but when you start talking about proposed legislation that we're going to, that's our big fear. I'm not afraid of that, but we have a lot of people in this county afraid. We have a church that's owned by minorities that doesn't have a sign on it and keeps their doors locked because they're afraid. We have a minority-owned business here in Jamestown that had some of our finest young men in their KKK regalia out in front of their shop. They're terrified. Now, we're going to add, if we, if we don't support the red flag law, we're going to add women that have boyfriends or ex-husbands and have protection orders that aren't being enforced, we're going to add them to the fear. Their fear is that this will handcuff the, the sheriff and the police to be able to enforce things. We're going to also discourage teachers that might see us a threat, but they don't have to, enough evidence to go to court and get a court order. You know, can they rely on the red flag law that's proposed so that the student or whoever is threatening the school could be investigated and weapons are cooling off period? So, I think this goes too far. And if the purpose is just symbolism, symbolism for what? You know, perpet-, perpetuate this, you know, that it's the Wild West and we all have to be armed and go after each other or put up with that? And I, I just, it's too far. If it's just symbolic, why do it?
Go right ahead, ma'am, come right up here.
My name is Mary Gale, and I am a District Three constituent. And you can tell I'm not from here, but I moved here because I love it here. And I moved here because it was a God-fearing, Bible-believing county that I could be safe and know that my constitutional rights were protected. And, and Commissioner Hughes, you're my commissioner, and I want to answer your question of, does it matter a hill of beans? It does to me because you'll be saying to me as your constituent that you agree that our constitution and our Second Amendment rights matter. We're going to be voting and saying to your constituents, we care, we're going to keep Fentress County the way Fentress County is supposed to be, a, a, a county that believes in the Constitution of the United States. And if the other women are afraid, I'm sorry, they didn't listen to the attorney who said it's law-abiding citizens. It's not Wild Wild West, it's not going to turn Wild Wild West, but it will say to the constituents and the people that love it here and moved here and have grown up here and live here and love what we stand for here, that you are for us as our commissioners. So, I would urge you to support it. Thank you.
Right on up, sir.
Yeah, I ain't got no education, don't have nothing like that much, no drug, I know one thing, you got to stand up for what you believe in, right? That's that Second Amendment. Our forefathers gave blood for that Second Amendment. Big blood. And don't you think, you know, they fought for you, no matter how you believe, they fought for you? Because you can have the freedom, and we got to have the freedom as a nation, as a people. But if our nation comes against us, we can fight back. And this is what's on the line, freedom for the people. And if you all live in America, we need to go for this.
Question's been called for. Roll call, please.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Pass.
Conflict.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Nine, four, one, pass.
Nine, four, one passes. Item number 18, consideration of approval of resolution 2020-09, authorizing transfer of funds from the General Fund of Fentress County Budget Line 101 to Debt Services Fund Line 151 for loan payment. Any?
I make the most of the vote.
Let me.
Hold on one second.
You can call for a recess?
We'll call for a recess for about five, 10 minutes here. If anybody wants to leave, they can, we can get back into, uh, a little bit of order if you don't care.
If you don't care, uh, Ms. Martha Wiley, she's here now, we'll let her explain.
If you don't care, we'll just take a back step here just for a minute and, uh, let her explain what they were asking for down there. Then we'll continue with item number 18. And we must've run out of popcorn because everybody left. I don't know what is happening, but, uh...
And we, and we have approved your...
Mary, well, I thought it would be later on the docket, so I'm sorry I was late. I think you all have approved the facade grant. It's $100,000 that the city of Jamestown got for facade improvement around the city. We cannot, as a historical society, apply because we don't own the building. But, um, the contract will come to the city sometime in mid-March, and after that, uh, that will be the time to pick up applications and, yeah, we have to have the price, uh, et cetera. Now, it's a 75, 25 grant. So, one of the things that we thought was so important, we've tried to do the ADA compliance as we remodeled the building. Uh, we put all 36-inch doors in there, made, and used the handicap levers on the doors so that we'd be ready to do that. We've also built a ramp that goes up into the other side where the county archives are. But the door in the front, uh, has a gap in it, it, it makes it very cold, but also we have to have an ADA-compliant door, which is expensive. And this grant, if we get it, would, uh, pay for 75% of that. Also, uh, the awning that's over there is flat, and so leaves come down on it, and, uh, it's not very practical because you really would have to get a bucket truck to clean up there, and it's not very attractive, uh, and it's really hard to maintain. So, we would also like, uh, for you to apply for our new, uh, awning for the building, and I think it would help. That leaves are staying up there and it's causing the water not to drain well, and, uh, those are two things that we thought, uh, if the county could apply, that would be helpful for that building. It would also, if we get good doors, uh, it would also cut the heating costs. We don't, we keep the heat very low, we're not there, and, uh, we, uh, use as little as possible, if we are, we're trying to save money there, but, uh, air comes in under the door, and, uh, the door doesn't close very well. Uh, I mean, it locks, but there's a space there, so that would also be a savings.
Ms. Martha, thank you very much, and they did vote on it and they did pass it to, to do that. We appreciate you very much for what y'all do over there.
Thank you, and I, I would love for all of you to visit us, uh, and, uh, see what, what we have there. And Robert, if, uh, if you could get the cost of what, uh, what the door would be based on what they have told us that we need, and if we could get the cost of an awning, and we'll be glad to help in any way we can with, with doing that.
I'll get that kind of story in the car.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Martha.
Thank you, and thank you so much for letting us have that space. It's a really nice space, and, uh, we have a lot more people coming in, and, uh, we're really thrilled with it. Thank you.
Item number 18, consideration of approval of resolution 2020-09, authorizing transfer of funds from the General Fund of Fentress County Budget Line 101 to Debt Services Fund Line 151 for loan payment. I believe we had a motion.
I'm going to withdraw that also.
Destroy your motion.
Yeah.
Set show, uh, block, withdraw his motion.
We briefly discussed this in the Budget Committee, uh, about potentially moving money, and this was due to, we had received a sum of cable franchise fee that was unexpected due to, Twin Lakes thought it was a state shared revenue that they were pulling, it's actually revenue that they dispersed on their own, and there was confusion there. Twin Lakes has now backed up and paid us for seven years' worth of cable franchise fee. There's money there. Before you guys vote to move money, $100,000 out of the General Fund to Debt Service Fund to pay this off, this loan that we're talking about, it's what is referred to here and everybody talks about, and they'll call it the million-dollar loan. There's 218,000 left on the principal of that loan. We've already budgeted the normal principal payment for that this year, which is $69,000. So, we need another 149,000. My suggestion, with the prod-, with the projects we have such as ADA and, and every time I turn around, something's, somebody's coming to me with something that we need to be working on. I, I would say, let's leave, this is my opinion, leave the $100,000 alone in the General Fund. Um, you know, we were budgeted red on that fund anyway. What Twin Lakes give us will actually help us to not be in the red. What I would say is if you want to pay that off is, is use fund balance in the Debt Service Fund. That's a healthy fund, um, that we're actually, should be surplus on at the end of the year. By looking at everything, if we pulled 149,000 out of the fund balance of the Debt Service Fund, we'll hit that fund balance. It'll have a deficit, of course, because we're hitting extra, but it'll be roughly 144,000. Now, that's, that's rough numbers. The reason I can't give you an exact is the interest rate on those have a 5% cap. They're bonds, they're on a bond market and they trade every Wednesday. That rate trend changes every single week. It's not 5%, it's not nowhere near 5%. We pay roughly 2.7% every month on that loan. So, what we budget for interest on that, we have to budget that cap, that it can cost us up to 5% so that, on that interest. So, what we're looking at saving if we pay this off is three years' worth of loan payments, we're looking at saving about $30,000 in interest payments, roughly. So, but we can, it's $149,000 more is what we need. My suggestion is to take that from the fund balance of, of Debt Service. And I, if, if anybody has any questions on where that'll leave us, what that budget looks like, I, I've, I've got some paperwork here with me that I can go over that. Now, your, your Debt Service Fund is healthier than your General Fund. No, we don't want to deplete that, but this does clear up debt if we're looking at having to issue some debt for ADA projects or...
Cash on hand today in Debt Services, 2.3 million dollars.
Who asked for this request? Who requested this transfer?
We actually, when, when we got the money, we was looking to, just instead of wasting the money, try to just pay some debt off. Um, it, it, it doesn't look bad to pay debt off if you could pay debt off early. I think that's a, that's a positive for us. Um, you know, like Tyler said, if, if you got your budget book in Debt Service, one of the biggest things that we have to budget at 5% is the, you know, is the interest on that. Well, we had, we had to budget 125,800 for that, that loan. But last year, it cost us 47,174. So, that's because the interest rates, you know, fluctuates. So, but we have to, we have to budget the 5% by law, because that, it could go to 5%. So, that's 70-something thousand dollars, you know, that's going to play into this, which we'll still hit the fund balance by about 135,000 to 140,000.
Once we pay off this, the only debt we have outstanding is South Interest, um, it to right.
And our capitalists on the Justice Center.
And the Justice Center. So, that is everything but those two.
That's it. And, Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the full amount out of Debt Services instead of transferring from General Fund.
And I will second that. Motion being made by Commissioner Cooper to take the amount out of Debt Service, and it's seconded by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Is there any more discussion?
So, are we taking the 149,000 or the 100,000?
It, it'll be the 149,000, but once you get, once it, once the interest in the principal has come off of it, which on the other loans, it'll be about 135,000, it's probably 140, maybe.
Bet you'll hit fund balance for it.
It could hit fund balance, yes.
Well, absolute worst-case scenario, if those loans from here on out went to 5%, I don't foresee that, but absolute worst-case scenario, we would hit the fund balance for 186,000. That's worst-case scenario, if those hit 5%, we rode, rode out the rest of the year at them at the cap.
I believe you can get rid of the interest.
Any more discussion?
It just seems like the more debt you can pay off, the better off you are in the loan.
Absolutely, get rid of the interest.
Roll call vote.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Nine, four, none.
Nine, four, none against. Item number 19. We talked with, uh, we had a conversation with, uh, Cumberland Medical in Crossville on our inmate services that, basically almost the same one that we had with, uh, Renova before they went south, uh, and with Tenova also. But I talked with them and they agreed, I talked with their board members, and they agreed on our, uh, inmate hospitalization and emergency room treatment that doesn't carry any professional, doesn't carry any professional services. But they agreed at a rate of 40% of the cost, so they'll be giving us a 60, a 60% reduction in, in our, uh, amounts payable to the, uh, payables to them. So, that being said, what is the will of the commission, to agree on this or not to agree with Cumberland Medical?
And let me jump in there and say, this is the, uh, most basic standard services agreement. It's for five years, which puts us in a, a good place, so it's done, not renegotiated every year, and it, um, gives us an opportunity, so long as we pay them on time, and, and we always have, to, um, keep this in place instead of, I think I was, with Jamestown, was just year to year.
Chairman, I move that we approve it.
Motion by Commissioner Larry Cooper to approve it. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wade Matthews. Any more discussion?
If Fentress County gets a, a medical facility back, are we still locked into that?
No, sir. In fact, um, there's one for Cookland Regional here as well. It, it does not bound us- It does not bound us to take them to Cumberland Medical Center. In the instances that they treat what it is their inmates need, we would take them there if it's closer or they have availability of beds or surgical services or whatever. But we also have, you know, the occasional heart attack or claim of a heart attack that goes to Cookeville because they provide those cardiac services. And so the next item on the agenda is the Cookeville one as well. So essentially, that's at the discretion of the ambulance service primarily, who would be taking them, or if it is a minor, something that can't be treated at fast pace, or if it's overnight, then the officer's discretion applies there where they go. So it's no, it's not binding us to one or the other.
Is Cookeville the same agreement?
No.
No.
This is just for the Cumberland County only. Any more discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Four. Ten, four, none against. Motion passes. Item number twenty, consideration of inmate medical services agreement between Fentress County and the Cookeville Regional Medical Center. We talked with those, talked with their business office, and we'll be getting a sixty-three-and-a-half percent reduction in bills, so we'll be paying thirty-seven-point-five percent of the bill is what their office accounted for. And this is, this is for a period of one year on this one.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Robert Cooper to approve the agreement. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Justin Miller. Any more discussion?
I just want to go on the record. Jimmy said it, but please understand, when y'all looking at these budgets, doesn't count radiology, doesn't count your ER doctor, doesn't count most of your lab services, doesn't count for what's called ancillary services or other doctors who come in to consult and see you. It's your hospital bill. And if you've ever been billed, if you've been in the hospital and you got a bill, you know there's eight more trailing behind it. Those are very different, and typically, doctors don't take on the opportunity to lessen the blow there. So please, when you look at your budgets, don't get confused by that, or if you do, know what it really means.
And what got our attention to this, of course, the hospital here in Jamestown, we didn't shut down. We had an agreement with them. But what got our attention, the sheriff came to us and said he just paid a bill on two patients to Cumberland County, both of them Cumberland County, for forty thousand dollars that week. So we called, and they agreed, and we're very happy that they did. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Four. Ten, four, none against. Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, consideration of request from the Fentress County Sheriff's Department to declare two vehicle surplus to be sold on Gov.Dills. One is a two-thousand-five Ford Explorer, and one is a two-thousand-dollar Dodge Ranger. Is that correct? What's the motion?
motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hughes to accept it. Second by, second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Is that right?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Justin.
Four. Ten, four, none against. Item number twenty-two, consideration of the following budget amendments. Sheriff's Department in the amount of eight thousand, twenty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents for the TATs over reimbursement.
Like most Cooper.
Motion by Commissioner Justin Cooper to approve. Do I hear a second? Justin Miller. It's been a long night, Justin. Second by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Any more discussion?
Can those factor when you can make the motion and second it too, right?
Second by. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Mickey.
Four. Ten, four, none against. The next one is Senior Center in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for fundraising and thirty dollars and eighty-five cents into the nutrition program. That basically it. Mr. Alice, motion by Commissioner Benny Cooper. Benny Hughes. Second by, second by.
Did you edit that out?
Commissioner Justin Miller.
This shouldn't be Benny Hughes.
Benny Hughes. I do it that way about every third meeting. Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Ten, four, none against. The next one, County Commission in the amount of seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars for TCRS contributions. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Robert Cooper.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mickey McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mickey.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Leon.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Larry.
Four. Okay, we should do the next one. The last one would be Debt Services, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars paying off the million-dollar loan. Is that correct? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Lester Gooding. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion, second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please. Four.
Wade.
Four.
Leon.
Four. Four.
Benny.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Four.
Four. Ten, four, none against. Any other business?
I've got one more. I've got one more budget amendment here.
Okay.
Mickey. This is for the Sheriff's Department. This is the auction that we had up there. The sale of their property, that seized property, has to go back into their budget to be spent on Sheriff's equipment for the Sheriff's Department. That's what this budget amendment's for.
Give you a second to look at that?
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion been made by Commissioner Lester Gooding to approve it. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Benny Hughes. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please. Four.
Four.
Rod.
Four.
Robert.
Four.
Benny.
Four. 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 Four.
Larry.
Four. Ten, four, none against. Motion passes. If there's not any more business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Roll vote. So move with Commissioner Larry Cooper. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Robert Cooper. Thank y'all for coming to stand with us tonight. I know it's been a long meeting, but thank you very much.